Live or is it memorized? There you go. Okay. Welcome, everybody, to the regular board meeting, Monday, December ninth, two thousand and twenty. We have met official compliance with all notifications. Roll call, please.
Nick Olson.
Here.
Laura Gapsky.
Here.
Brooke Taylor.
Here.
Sarah Schubert.
Here.
Ed Gallagher.
Here.
President Steve Wilson.
Here.
Next remark is excused.
Thank you. At this time, would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the regular meeting of the school board, the School District Superior, held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for comments by members of the public during the meeting as indicated on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to address the board and any of the topics included on tonight's agenda may do so by signing up on the public comment signup sheet by the entrance prior to the start of the meeting. The board requests refraining from making any comments involving personally identifiable information about students, staff, or administration. Comments should be respectful, focused on the items being considered by the board, and will be restricted to three minutes in length. But this regular board agenda action taken at today's meeting will be final approval unless otherwise noted. So our first agenda item, comments by members of the public. This time, I'd like to welcome Oso Fish to speak.
Speech order.
He certainly can. At this time, Amanda Horton, if you would, please come forward to speak. Amanda, we are going to stay with the three-minute length, and Ann will be letting you know on thirty seconds it stops.
Great. Uh, thank you to Gekanemia John, Louis Democ, Indishin Kals, Wijibwe Moind, uh, Meekanak, Indudain, Miss Quadi, Kapi, Junchba. So I'm Amanda Horton. I am from the Red Cliff Band of Wijibwe. I am Turtle Clan. Parent and community member and member of the American Indian Parent Committee. Um, I just wanted to come and just, um, share some support in honor of the drumming at the graduation ceremonies. Um, to that, I just wanted to, um, talk a little bit about the drum as a sacred instrument representing the heartbeat of Mother Earth. Um, it serves as a vital connection to spirituality, community, and identity. It's treated with deep respect and not been personified as a grandfather figure. I know there's been worry about being viewed as a district or a community that is endorsing a religious group. Uh, however, this is not the case. Uh, this is about acknowledging that we are on sovereign land and that we, as a district, are honoring the progress that has been made to overcome the intergenerational trauma inflicted by both the US government in the name of religion. Uh, for years, we have not been able to practice our traditional ways of life, one being singing, dancing, and drumming. It actually wasn't until the nineteen seventies that we finally gained this right back. And when we sing and dance and drum, we are on a lot of creation in all people. I know that many school events begin with a land acknowledgement, but I do not see how we can truly honor and respect those whose land in which we reside and our identities without honoring our traditions and the heartbeat of our people. And then I just kind of wanted to bring attention, um, to the racial education equity statement that we have. I'm reading a lot about the concept of educational equity as it goes beyond formal equality. Um, I have statements in here where we are recognizing, including respecting our sovereign tribal partners and all Indigenous students, families, and staff in our community, um, identifying and removing barriers in our current policies, procedure systems, or practices that limit opportunities for our students, and identifying and providing equal opportunities for students to demonstrate learning. I just feel, um, that drumming would do that. Um, I feel like it honors, uh, huge populations, maybe not huge population, but a significant population in our district. Um, and I just don't understand how we can really stand by our statements of equity if we don't start honoring some of the traditional practices of our native students. So I'm just here to show my support and hopefully we're moving forward on this.
Thanks, Amanda.
Thank you.
Oso.
My name is Oso Fish. I am a Menominee. I am a junior at Superior High School. Sometimes it feels like my identity as a and culture as a native person are invisible or treated as a joke. In school, I've had experiences where classmates have made comments or jokes that reduce my culture to stereotypes or dismiss its significance. My classmates have called me names like "sneer thrower", asked if I came to school in a canoe, or joked about what I eat, like if, uh, like asking if I brought wild rice for lunch. Even in moments where I just try to exist, like saying the water's too hot in the shower after practice, someone will joke, "Sorry, I forgot you're used to bathing in a river." And then there's the question I get all too often, "Are you a dots or feathers Indian?" In ninth grade, I had a science assignment called "Periodic Table Puns" that gave a clue, and then you have to guess which element it was describing. Things like "not an exciting person", boron, or what a dog does with a bone, burial. I stopped when I read the clue "Thanksgiving guests" because I knew the correct answer was the element "India". My native identity was a clue on an assignment. Not only did I feel invisible at that moment, I knew my classmates were all reading this and getting the message that Indians aren't real people. They are, they are stereotypes, caricatures, or mythical figures from the past. To their credit, anytime I've let people at school know about things that have happened to me like this, they have been quick to respond. But most of the time, I don't tell anyone. I just absorb it because I'm used to it. These moments make me feel like my culture and history are being erased or turned into punchlines. It's exhausting having to constantly explain or defend who I am while people treat it like a joke or a stereotype. I just want my culture and experiences to be seen and respected for what they are. Having drumming at graduation is a step in the right direction toward making Native people be seen and our culture respected. When we sing in honor song at graduation, it is not just for the Native American students. We will be honoring all students. It is our way to celebrate this achievement, and I hope you thought to allow drumming to be a part of the graduation ceremony. Thank you.
Thank you, Oso. Our next board agenda meet, um, excuse me, our next agenda meeting is disposition of minutes from November fourth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Motion accept.
Second.
Okay, second, accept the disposition of minutes from November fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. If there are any further discussion, hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Report of the superintendent, informational items at the committee of the whole meeting on December two, two thousand and twenty-four, Principal Erin Fezzi provided a very thorough update of what was happening at Superior High School and what their long-term plans are for the school year. We have some new items tonight. First, Taylor McMeekin, our student representative, is here to give us a high school update. Hi, Taylor.
Thank you. I'll start off with some student council updates. Uh, we decorated the school for the holiday and winter season. Um, we hosted a gingerbread contest, um, for students after school last Wednesday for the first time. And there were seventeen teams who showed up, so it was a really good turnout for the first time ever doing it. Um, there's also a hot chocolate bar there hosted by a parent from the PTSA. Um, glow ball, like I had mentioned, um, last time I was here. Uh, we were planning for a dance for the students to be at the middle school, um, since there was no room available to do it at the high school during December. Um, but there was not enough people who bought tickets, unfortunately, so we had to cancel it. And our goal with that was to try to implement more casual dances to the school year, I guess. But I don't know if it's because it was at the middle school or people just didn't have any interest in it, so I don't know. Um, last Wednesday night, there was an informational meeting about scholarship details, and the general and Nelson scholarship applications are now open. Um, this Wednesday night, there's an informational meeting about financial aid as FAFSA applications are opening soon. Um, some other club highlights, Spartan Spin is working on listening to an increasing student voice within the school. Um, Decca is participating in a mini-districts competition at Two Harbors High School this Friday to prepare for districts in the New Year. And they will also be hosting a miracle minute at both the girls' basketball and boys' hockey games tomorrow. Um, Interact Club did bell ringing for the Salvation Army this past weekend. And then a couple, like, winter sports updates, girls' basketball had their Hoops for Hope game, raising money for cancer, and girls' hockey had their Ugly Sweater game. And that also had Gabrielle Olsen's and Haley Oldby's senior project with events raising money for Sophie Squad.
Thank you, Taylor.
Thank you.
Uh, next, I'd like to welcome Christine Staria, our elementary school principal at Cooper.
You. First off, thank you to Ann. I would say I'm, like, victorious for changing this at the last second and then one more time, so. It's kind of like I'll update it, it's fine. Uh, so I'm Christine Staria, Principal at Cooper. We have a lot of amazing things going on, but first I'll start by talking about the new school boundaries and the student transition and how that's been going. So this year, we have three hundred fifty-seven, uh, students, four K through fifth. Um, still not quite at our two thousand and nineteen numbers. So although we did get an influx, I know, uh, school board members that have come to Cooper, although we got an influx of students, the enrollment drop was just, I mean, really, we're sitting right back about where we were at. Um, with that, I mean, so we filled up a little bit, but not as much as, as we were anticipating when I first got the job and when I met with Mr. Leapers. Um, getting to know the kids was definitely, you know, the, the hardest part. We're, we're definitely used to, you know, getting a handful of kids, but getting that many was just, September was busy. But I have to do a shout out to all of our teachers, our counselor, everybody's been amazing. Um, September was busy, October felt like we are doing good, November feels really good, so now that we're in December, I'm like, okay, we've got this. Um, definitely getting to know the kids, we've had a lot of fun activities. So I feel like we're definitely in a good groove now. Some of the, uh, family nights that we've had, we had our fall into reading for September. We had a great turnout for that. Um, a lot of families coming in, and then we had food and getting to know the kids on a different level, getting to see some of the families that we knew from the past. That's just one of my favorite nights. We had our trunk or treat, and then we also had a family movie night in October, too, so. Um, we've had a lot going on in December. We have, uh, we just had our tree lighting, so thank you to David for coming out and also helping when my mic wasn't working and stepping in and, um, making that run smoothly, so it was, that was another great event. Another thing that we did, too, I have to give a shout out to, um, Mason Basco. He's actually our physical therapist. When we met, we were in September, actually, it was probably August, we were talking about, um, our PBIS and how we were gonna roll that out to students, how we were gonna roll that out to families. And Mason had just been like, hey, if you guys want a graphic, I could do that. And we're like, okay. Um, he put this amazing graphic trifle that we are gonna be sending home to families, so we just kind of fine-tuned it with our PBIS team, um, going over the different expectations, and so we're gonna push this out in January as our reboot, when the kids come back and all the reteaching and everything that goes into that. But, um, just like common language with the families and with us, I think that it's a huge, huge impact to, to our students and how well they do, so I just had to give a shout out to him for his amazing work. We've had a lot of celebrations. Um, again, we, we saw an increase in our school report cards, so that goes directly back to the teachers and all the hard work that they're doing. The interventions that they're doing, PLC work has been extremely strong this year. With the, uh, students that came in, we also got quite a few new teachers. Um, we had just about a new teacher in every single grade level except for fifth grade. Um, and it has been amazing. The, uh, ideas, skills, different expertise that those teachers have brought to the PLCs has, I feel like has made our PLCs even stronger. Um, and then we've also had a lot of collaboration across grade levels, which has been great, too. So teachers have been meeting with, I think I mentioned this later on, too, but teachers have been meeting with grade levels above and below to just make sure that they are using different expertise to meet the individual needs of the children. And then we had our trimester one PBIS celebration, and it was a huge hit. Um, this time, we had, we had different stations for all the kids, and we kind of mixed grade levels, too, so it has, some of the bigger kids were helping with the younger kids. And it, it was great. We had, um, community members that came in that were helping do clay. There, there was, um, people who have backgrounds with, um, culinary, and so they were coming in with, with teaching the kids different things to cook, so it was really fun celebration for the kids. Some challenges, like I mentioned, you know, Sept- September was a little rough on getting to know some of the students, but I feel like we are doing a great job at moving past that. Our support staff's been amazing with teaming up with teachers. Um, at Cooper, the support staff roles changed a bit. We, um, we had some grade level supports in the past, and now it's our focus is on our special education minutes. Um, and then the schedules and, and if support staff have been out. I don't know about other buildings, but we have gotten hit with sickness at Cooper, so it has been like, I mean, one after another after another, so. Um, and I can, like, I personally had pneumonia, so I mean, I get it, like, they were, as school board members came, I had no voice. Um, so that has also been a challenge, but, um, a huge shout out to Molly for helping navigate some of that. We've gotten some some teacher subs that will step in and help with those para roles, and we've actually gotten a handful now that are willing to come back and they step in across all areas of the building, so that's been a huge help. Hopefully, knock on wood, we're in a better spot now and moving for the healthier part, but. Then our goals. So this year, we focused on seeing the gains for all of our students. Now, we want all students to be at grade level or above grade level, right? If, if it was a perfect world. Um, but really, what we also noticed is that a lot of our kids are making huge gains, but they're not at grade level yet, but they, they've made, you know, thirty-point gains on the Fastbridge assessment, and we wanted to highlight that, so. This year, um, our goal is that each grade level will increase the average score on the benchmark assessment by five percentile points from fall to spring. I did put our fall data in there, and it, it doesn't look the greatest, but I always love fall data because it is so much growth that you see. So fifty-four percent of our students are currently scoring low risk or on track for kindergarten and first grade, and then fifty-six percent of our students are currently low risk or on track for second through fifth. So that's broken down because we're doing, um, the two different assessments in Fastbridge. Now, in January, we're gonna do our next round of testing with Fastbridge. Um, and I'm excited to see the gains, just the, the assessments that the teachers have been doing and the progress monitoring. We've already seen awesome gains, so I always, when the teachers come back with this data, and they're like, like fifty-four percent of our kids, I'm like, but ju- like, we have so much room to grow now, so how exciting is that? Um, and also, you know, we had new kids and trying to learn different things, and they didn't know the teachers as well, so I, I'm excited to be able to come back and, and present this data and show the gains that we made.
While, while you're on the slide, where do the other forty-four, forty-six percent fall within that spectrum? Like, real close to low, or?
We did, uh, so I don't have it memorized. Um, but we did have with our EMLSs, so our EMLSs teacher is working with quite a few kids, and she was able to to actually push out. I want to say we have moved out about twenty kids that she was, that she was working with, that she was able to move out because they were making too many gains. Not a bad thing. I made that sound like it was a negative thing. Definitely not. Um, so the summer slide, part of this is summer slide, so getting those kids just back in the groove of school and back in the groove of testing, I would say that I, we're in the sa- higher sixties right now would be my prediction. Um, we do have about thirty percent of our kids that I would say are in the red, if not, you know, thirty-five, but, um, our teachers are working really hard to do those interventions to make sure that we're meeting the needs of those kids and, and doing what's best for them, so I, I see those gains happening, too. Um, then, so like I had mentioned before, the PLC teams have a meeting to talk about those individual needs of the students. I feel like our PLC teams are stronger than they've ever been. Uh, the partnership between classroom teachers, special education teachers, and our EMLSs teachers has been phenomenal as well. Another thing that we talked about with the shared leadership at, in August, was we need to have more of a collaboration with those special education teachers, so bringing those special education teachers really uh, sharing their strategies, their interventions, what they're doing, um, getting them to be the, the primary focus with those teams. In the past, what we did was, we had, um, the special education teachers kind of worked K through five, so they were all the way across the board. This year, we were able to have a special education teacher that works primarily kindergarten first, second and third, and fourth and fifth. So I feel like they're able to hone in with those grade levels and support them even more. Um, and then working with grade level teachers above and below, like I had discussed, to, one, do the interventions to talk if there's a third-grade teacher who has students who are struggling with a standard or an aspect that might be first or second grade, they're collaborating with them, they're getting resources from them. With that, too, if we've got a third grader who is needing enrichment, they're talking with the fifth-grade teachers, fourth-grade teachers to talk about what are you gonna need next year? What is something that you've noticed as a challenge when you get the, these students next year or in two years? What can I do to help build them up so that they're ready for the, the later grades? Uh, so it's been, it's been great. The teachers have definitely risen to the challenges this year. Action steps that we have going on, so we have, um, classroom incentives for reading workshop type. So one of the things that the teachers talked to me about was like, I, my group is great. My group of five kids or four kids that I'm working on, that's great, but the kids that are outside of me and doing their independent work, they're, they're not on task like they would like them to be. Um, so what we started was, we made these papers that said "work" on them, and I would walk through, and they don't know what I'm gonna walk through, and I will fill in a letter, so some of you got to see this when you were at Cooper, I'm coming in, use this as a time for me to be able to get this done. Um, so when I see the students working independently, and if they can talk to me about what the standard is that they're focusing on or what the goal is of what they're doing, then I go up to the board and I fill in one of the letters, and once they get the full word filled in, then the students get an extra recess with me, and the teachers get an extra prep, so it's kind of like a win-win for everybody. We got our first word done, so all the classes earned work. Now we are on focus, so the shared leadership team came together and talked about what we would want our next word to be. I do tell the children, um, that I'm not gonna fill in a letter every single time I come in. I know my own personal children, they were like, can you fill one in? Um, but it is, it's fun to see when I walk in and they know, like, I'm gonna be asking them questions, I'm gonna be talking to them. They, it's getting the students' engagement more on that independent work, which has been fun. Then each grade level developed menus for interventions and strategies that can be used in the classroom. So they had talked about how there is a lot of great ideas on what teachers are doing and trying to build that collaboration on what they could be doing for writing activities, what they could be doing for word work activities. Now, that's gonna look vastly different from kindergarten to fifth grade, um, but then also sharing these menus across grade levels, so we're trying to get that collaboration in even more on these different styles and strategies that teachers are using. I will be also pushing for the second half of the year, um, for trick, for peer collaboration and peer observations like we did last year. I wanted to give, uh, new teachers time to just kind of settle into their position, settle into the new building, but we will be moving into that for the second half of the year as well. I always say that if I knew every, kind of like, now that I'm a principal, I get to go in all these classrooms, get to see all these amazing things, trying to provide that opportunity for the teachers, because there's some awesome things happening at Cooper. And then PLCs have created agenda and data tracking forums to guide their PLCs. We, my first two years, we had PLCs on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and this was selfishly so that I can make it to more PLCs. This year, with, uh, Sarah Barnes and mostly Sarah Barnes, but she is at Cooper Thursday and Friday, and I didn't want it to be like she never made it to a PLC. I also didn't want to be like, okay, well, kindergarten and first grade, you have to do your PLCs on Thursday, and everybody else has a choice. So we moved them all to Thursdays, which has been great for planning-wise. I haven't been able to make it to every single one, but the nice thing is, is that I've got the data tracking sheets, I've got those, their agendas to see what is going on, what I can support with. Same with our counselor, EMLSs. They can invite us then easier. They look at their agenda, see whether they need us, and we kind of are able to fill in the gaps that way. And then we have our daily and weekly planning templates for, that was shared by our shared leadership teams. So that was just a way to map out what you're gonna do that day, what you're gonna do that week, share it out for everybody to see, and then they, so the primary focus of this was in their guided reading instruction, which has been our main focus at Cooper. But then they can tweak it, make it how they need it to be, but also just help with that planning. I had a teacher one year who was, had jury duty possibly, and, you know, you never know until that night. And they made a comment like, that was the biggest pain, but man, my instruction was amazing because I did so much planning because I never knew if I was gonna have a sub. So just helping those strategies and techniques on what we can do to help that planning be a little bit smoother. And then our shared leadership has been sharing out strategies and interventions that teachers have been asking for. I've also been bringing these strategies to my support staff meetings to work with our support staff on enhancing their different strategies that they can do when they're working with the students. I always feel like I go so fast. Um, is there any questions?
I have a question that came up, and this was probably more for Amy or Crystal or Kate, if she was here. I mean, we always hear, well, she was talking about thirty percent. Kids are probably in the red. That's probably gonna diminish by the end of the year. Um, what's that?
The goal.
The goal, yeah. You know, so that's the hundred, hundred and five kids, roughly. We always hear about graduation rates, what kids graduate, what kids don't, and I guess I haven't heard, or maybe I've missed it. Are, are kids getting held back grade levels anymore, or are we getting them through each level? I'm trying, I'm trying to ask this nicely.
No, you're right. We, retention is not a common practice in any school. It's just, there's not a lot of research that supports that. Um, we continue to provide different types of supports for students as they move through elementary, middle, and high school. Um, so there's different programs and oper- options for kids to be able to, to pass courses and get the supports they need, so that looks different by level as, as students um, move through the levels. I will say, one data point that stands out to me as we started our graduation rate work, um, even before I was here, was we were recognizing that students, the number of students who are proficient on our state tests was not aligning to our graduation rate, so we had students who were achieving, but were not graduating, and so that was one of the data points we used to really help to move, um, our goal-setting in that area. I don't know if you want to say anything more about that, Crystal, but.
I would just reiterate the importance of the research that doesn't support retention and holding things back.
And I would say that our focus has been creating more robust EMLSs systems, that is truly creating more systems for kids who are struggling either in reading or math is really what we need to do, and I know the middle school has done a lot more work this year. Um, our next steps now are really what it was, that looked like at high school.
Okay, uh, just to go off that then, it's like a kid struggling, let's say, third grade, not meeting the standards, goes to fourth grade. Standards are different, maybe a little bit harder. So what's it look like for that student? Are they giving more instruction from that third grade and fourth grade level, or are they missing a chunk that they just couldn't get or understand? Like, how does that look going to the next grade, when they're not making that standard?
So one, I mean, there's many factors that go into this. Is it a child with a learning disability? Because if it's a child with a learning disability, then they're gonna have a goal, a goal in their IEP that the special education teacher is gonna be working on with them to help kind of bridge that gap a little bit there. The other part of it is what, what standard, what area are they struggling with? Is it the comprehension, is it fluency? What is it? So then our EMLSs teacher is, if they're not qualified for special education services, so if they're qualified for special education services, they're getting a double dip with the special education teacher who's focusing, and then their classroom teacher. If they are struggling and then they're working with the EMLSs teacher, same thing. She does her diagnostic, that first assessment that we do in the fall kind of tells what area they're struggling with more. So the EMLSs teacher is working with them, and she's also doing the progress monitoring to see if they're making the gains, if they're making. So the EMLSs teacher is working with them and she's also doing the progress monitoring to see if they're making the gains, if they're making adequate gains, what that's looking like. We bring that data back to our child support team meetings. So we come together, the teacher, any of the children that are EMLSs teachers working with. We bring the team together in August roughly, when the teachers come back and we talk with all those kids. We talk about what areas they were struggling with, let's say in second grade, and what was working or not working, what struggles they were having in second grade. So we'll have the second grade teacher, EMLSs there, and then the new teacher, myself, Ms. Thompson, if, if there's other aspects to it. Then we work together to create a plan for that child. So the teacher and really it's the teacher and um, the EMLSs teachers that also collaborate a ton to talk about what intervention the teacher is going to be doing, what intervention the EMLSs teacher is going to be doing to try to build in those gaps. Then we just watch their data really closely. So we kind of, we come together in six weeks. We present the data as a team, look at where they're at. Are they making the gains? If they're not, then what are we going to tweak? What do we need to do?
One of the other things you already mentioned tonight is that's why the growth data is so important. Because if the student isn't, if this, if there's a gap and the student's not, if you're not changing the trajectory, then they're never going to catch up to their peers. And so like the growth data point is so important. So if they need to be making greater growth than their peers are in order for them to catch up to a grade level. And so that's part of why you shared that tonight, I think.
Yep. But you're right. Let's say we have a third grader who's been struggling. Well, that's also why I've had, I had third grade teachers who are meeting with first grade teachers to say, Kate, I noticed that these fundamental skills, they're still struggling with. What can I do to help build that up with this child? Because they are going to have to modify their instruction to help meet the needs of that child. So they collaborate with them. We've had teachers across grade levels come in and observe, help each other out. Teachers have come to me and said, what, my, my passion was always the younger grades. I love first, second, third grade. I've come in, I've worked with the teachers, I've talked about different things that I've noticed, different interventions that we can do. Another thing that Cooper is amazing with is they will get PT, OT, different people to come in and just collaborate with them. Uh, Brett Gunderson, a, a teacher who primarily focused with our students who receive services under autism. He will come in and he'll collaborate with them and just have different strategies and different techniques. Like I said, at the end of the day, I want all kids at grade level. That is our goal. But really, what we're focusing on is what gains can we do to make it so that they're not falling behind? So. Yeah, I answered your question nicely, how you would walk through. That's what we're doing. So complex.
That I look at my rabbit hole and actually every child's, it's so different.
Need is very different. Yeah, so a lot of it brings it back to observations and then I'll notice different things that trigger something else in my mind. Oh yeah, that for instance, like Mr. Gunderson worked with a kid who had this similar thing and this is what he tried. Talk with him. And so a lot of my job is also teaming people up to get their answers that they need.
If the strength and more of a comment than a question is the, the brainstorming, other strategies, the collaboration. Um, one of the examples, the menus that you developed. And then the question part of it would be, and I, and I, I do believe I know the answer, but um, the sharing that you're able to do Christine amongst your peers and then within administrative team and then as we're sharing out in SLTs or the PLCs, all the work that's being done. So that the district in and of itself is looking at all of these strategies, how to enhance the learning process of our children.
And teaching is very different today than it was twenty years ago. I mean, PLCs are truly the foundation and, and being able to collaborate between, we have some of the, the best structures really that are PLCs. So now it's really about those interventions that we need to do to meet the individual needs of kids, but.
And I know um, he's not here tonight, but her teaming up with us. So this year she's had a, a large role of meeting the teachers at their buildings and collaborating with us. Where are you at on your action steps? What do you want your, what do you want to go from here? And I definitely feel like I'm a, have a big vision. Um, and then I, you, you almost get stuck in the weeds at times. And so she just, she came and she helped guide us on just a, a very informal conversation that really was organic and helped drive our next steps too. So um, I got to give a shout out to her too, because it's just, it's not, it goes beyond Cooper. So it's the collaboration of, of across the district, Crystal, Crystal coming in and collaborating with me when we go through observations and I'll do walkthroughs with Crystal. And she has a whole different expertise than I do. So there's many times we'll sit down and talk and she'll share what, you know, highlights that she sees or the, the great thing about what Crystal's able to do is she'll, she'll be able to share like, oh, at Northern Lights, I noticed this too. And maybe this is something that you can talk to your teachers about. So we, we definitely try to get out of just third grade, right? We got to move past just that one teacher and try to gain more expertise outside of that.
Thank you very much. Well done. All right, is Hope Squad ready? You're on. I'd like to introduce our Superior High School Hope Squad.
So this is um, continue to try to get our students in front of our school board as often as we can and share some of the exciting things guys are doing. So thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you. So I'm Leah Gavin. I'm a junior and this is my third year of Hope Squad.
I'm a senior and this is my first year of Hope Squad.
I'm Lila Graves. I'm a junior and this is my third year of Hope Squad. So Hope Squad was um, started because prior to its establishment, there were several years in a row where students at the high school completed suicide. Um, surveys were conducted and it showed that over fifty percent of students would go to their friends or fellow peers before they would go to an adult. It was decided that something had to be done to prevent this. So Hope Squad, which is a national program, was introduced into our schools. And we've had great success after its introduction. Um, there have been years where no students completed suicide.
And so um, SJS Hope Squad is a peer-led group that works to destigmatize and spread awareness about mental health. Along with spreading awareness, so we also work to recognize and educate people on signs of suicide. So uh, every year we've been going to the school forest and we do lessons out there to educate our Hope Squad members.
Um, every year the Hope Squad takes a trip out to the school forest to complete three mandatory training lessons. These lessons cover teamwork, recognizing signs of suicide and learning intervention skills. Besides training, this is also an opportunity for the Hope Squad, new and old members to bond. So we get to know each other on this day. We get to work um, individually with everybody. And it's a great way for us to actually sit down and see what we need to work on.
So we have a quick video for you guys from this year. And while that's playing, we're just going to pass out some um, Hope Squad merch to help you kind of break the glass.
Dan.
So then um, other than just the general um, school connection, everyone, every member of Hope Squad has a personal connection. So we just thought that we would share our view. So I joined because I had multiple people that I even cared about that had attempted suicide. And I wanted to do more to help out people. So since joining, I've been able to help out several of my peers by getting them to this uh, mental health support that they actually need. Um, and I've learned more about mental health and how to support my friends and myself.
Um, I joined Hope Squad out of both concern for my peers and my classmates and my personal past struggle with mental health. So it's one of my most important values. And I like being able to work with students that are struggling. And in my knowledge, I feel like it's helpful.
Yeah, again, my connection is really similar. Like I've had mental health struggles and so have my friends. I've seen all that. And being educated from Hope Squad and getting those lessons is so important. So you know what to do in a situation where you or someone you love is really struggling. I think that's really important for people in our community and all, and just for us as well.
Thank you so much. How many kids, Jane, are in the program?
Right now we have nineteen. That's great. Twelve. And every year, um, the students self-select. So we do a survey. We send out a survey and we ask the students at each grade level if they had to choose people that they feel were good listeners, that are easy to approach, um, that they would feel comfortable talking to if they had something going on, who are those people? And we ask them to list their names. And then we go through and it's like, you see names rise to the surface, you know, multiple nominations. And so we contacted those kids and say, you've been nominated by your peer via Hope Squad member. Can find out if it's something they're interested in doing. And if they say yes, then we contact the parents. You know, sometimes, you know, kids will say yes and parents will say, I want to know that, you know, I've had some parents saying, I love that he or she was nominated, but I don't think they're in a place right now, but it's, it's the best time. There may be other reasons. So, but that's our process. Um, occasionally we have kids, some students will come and say, I've had experiences with people in my life. I want to know more about how can I be of help in the school? So we consider counselors and I pretty much meet and talk about that and what works. So that's the process. It makes more sense from my perspective as an adult in the building to have the kids nominate who they're comfortable than us. The one thing we do, counselors and I, when those names come through is kind of those two will make sure that we have good representation of all the students in our building in that, in that Hope Squad.
Um, a couple of other things, Carrie Hennessy is our mental health coordinator for the district. She has been working um, with Jane. We've done a lot of work around um, staff training. I know you guys just had a staff meeting and talked about um, suicide awareness and response, um, and, and making sure that our staff understand how they support that. But the other exciting thing too is at the middle school, we're expanding this program also this winter. So we, we'll have it at the middle and the high school. And Eva is the social worker there and is going to lead that work for the middle school.
The other piece that's important, I think, to say here is that when we were working with the students and we're doing the training and they talked about those three mandatory lessons at the beginning of every year, you come back to school. Once we have the Hope Squad set for the year, we take a trip out to the school forest. There's three mandatory lessons that all the students have to have before they're ever interacting with other students in the building. It's not all of the lessons, but these are the three most important lessons that are mandated for us to provide to students first. And the goal is not for them to be counselors. The goal is for them to recognize
Someone needs help.
Signs of symptoms, things that they might notice with their friends. And if they do, how do you approach somebody? How do you talk to them about what's going on? How do you ask them if they're feeling suicidal? And it, and then help them know how to get students to trusted adults in the building who can help take those next steps to make sure everybody's safe.
The other thing that's been really, I think, important in our district is the uh, application of Speak Up, Speak Out. We do have students report students through that app and um, I want to say it saves lives.
It's another piece of what Hope Squad does too. They, they do a lot of different things. They're not just talking to peers. They're doing tabling events over lunch periods. Last year they created a video lesson that went out to all advisories. They're doing all kinds of activities. So they're in different ways helping educate students in the building as well and helping them. You've got, you've got a little bit of the swag tonight. They have, there are other things that they do with bracelets that have the ninety-eight number. So if somebody's alone and there, there's not anybody around, they, they, other students don't want to get connected and get help. So they do a lot of great work and um, they've been really busy this year already and there's lots of things coming up yet this month. So.
I have a couple of stats and Jane, you just, I know you have a team as well, but you just do such great work. So I always want to just highlight that because we don't see you a lot at the board and your initiatives, your grant writing, your reporting. Um, our school is so much, our district is so much better and our schools are so much better because of that. But um, I just want to acknowledge that you uh, young adults here, your young folks, you know, um, being willing to share that you've had your own mental health struggles is really, really brave. Um, and um, I appreciate that because then people know it's okay to talk about it and to say I need help. Um, um, and I wanted to know about the inclusivity because we know our trans students, our LGBTQ uh, students have higher rates of suicide. Um, so I, I, I'm glad there's some lens through that too. Um, rather than just nominating, you know, folks. Um, but I'm curious, you know, what do you, we don't need stats, but like, how many folks do you think they're impacting, Jane, or, or students? Like how many, how many folks do you think um, are benefiting from this program at our school?
I would say that it's pretty widespread. I know that me personally, I've had people come up to me and ask me to help them because they knew I was in Hope Squad. I've also had to go through the process of noticing these signs and drawing, taking awareness of it and, you know, drawing attention to it and getting people the help they need. Um, a big portion of it is that fear behind getting the mental health support.
Yeah.
So having someone that knows and knows they need that support, whether or not they get angry at me, whether or not they say that they don't want it because they don't want their parents involved or whatnot. It's very important in the hazard for students. I'd say at least after two weeks, I go through, talking to, bringing to an adult. Um, our biggest goal is just to destigmatize mental health through the school. And a lot of kids don't come out about it. They're not very open about it because it's shamed a lot of the time. Um, I'd say a lot of students.
I was, I was at a high school this weekend for, for a basketball tournament. And one of the things I saw in another high school was how to support athletes and athletes with mental health. Do you guys have a focus on that or not? Do you have representation there?
We have, we have representation of Hope Squad of athletes.
Because that is becoming a conversation, I think, more and more uh, within our sports teams too.
I know that last year that was one of our monthly focuses was making sure that you're taking care of yourself specifically for students who are more academically or athletically driven.
The pressure they put on themselves. Yeah.
So they have each, uh, each month, Hope Squad has a theme of the month. And so the Hope Squad members then decide how they, what they want to do. So like, um, we had gratitude in, in November. It's generosity in December. And there's all, we talked about how all of those different themes tie into mental health and how that supports mental health. And then they run with it. They create ideas. Um, they've got some plans and the works they've done tabling. And when you say how many students are impacted, they table during lunches. They set up a table, they have billboards, they have, we have a plinkle board and a spin wheel now. So there's questions to engage students, not just students coming up to take something from a table, but they're engaged in a conversation about mental health. And there's stickers and there's bracelets and there's all kinds of things. So I would say a, a large portion of our building is, is learning about this. And they push up questions to go up to advisory, all advisories, nine through twelve. So I think if people are missing it, there's very few people that are missing it.
Yeah, yeah. When we have people come up to our tabling events, we always make sure, we ask them important questions. Like what is one person you could go to if you're struggling?
Yeah.
Or what is some national hotline or some, somebody you can contact if you're struggling before they can get candy or gifts?
Yeah.
I also like to have, we have things in our group. We have ourselves. Us in our group. So we're reaching like the more popular link and more quietly.
Yeah, okay.
It's, it's everywhere in school, I'd say.
Yeah.
One comment, maybe a question, but I'd just like to commend you, you three for getting up here and giving this presentation, especially talking about your own um, mental health struggles, which I think can be tough enough to do, you know, just to one friend versus a whole room of adults here. So I echo what Laura says, it takes a lot of courage to get up and talk about that. But you guys, the, the three of you and the rest of your group have found a niche where, you know, the county, the city, the government has lacked significantly in our area with mental health. you know, the county, the city, the government has lacked significantly in our area with mental health and mental health for, for children, um, students. Um, so before I get to my question, also, I'd like to say, I think it'd be nice. I know we're here representing the school district of Superior, but has a vested interest in the county as well. You know, I'd like to see your Hope program expand, you know, take it to other schools, Northwest, and so on, get out there and present it, make it spread, you know? There's a lot of need um, within the entire county and, you know, the country for that matter. Um, so, thank you. Glad you, um, my question is, is there any community supports though? I, I know I just said there's not a lot, but is there any community supports that are, are helping on a monthly, weekly basis or anything like that, uh, other than staff?
We have, we have, certainly we have grant funding um, from the state. We've had some support sometimes from the county. I've reached out to the county. Sometimes with Dave Longsdorf and his team to say, we're working on something. Is there a way, does this tie into anything, you know, your initiatives or things that we could work with? Um, and the idea of expansion is taking it out to the community of the conversation we've been having this year. Like, we've been doing a great job in the building with students. But the next thing is like, we've been talking about, how do we bring it, how do we have the students involved in bringing this to adults in the building? And how do we take it outside of school into our community? What does that look like? How do we bring? Maybe we, Hope Squad, Hope Squad offers something in uh, in the community, invite people to come in and learn. They can share some of the things that they're learning with adults and other people in the community. So it's the goal to bring it outside of the building. Part of that is just how do we, I mean, they're very busy folks, you know? They're in school. They even have jobs. They're in other curriculum activities. So finding the time to make that happen, sometimes a struggle. But we're finding pockets, like these three tonight could come and be here, represent Hope Squad, and there's been other times when some other students have been able to come and do some other things. So it's certainly something we're looking at. Primarily our funding for Hope Squad for keeping it going. So there's a curriculum. In the past, um, when we first started this, this is your your five. Um, so in the past, they had a, a fee that we paid to have access to the curriculum every year. And there's a year one, year two, year three, year four, you know? Um, and so it was a standard fee. In this year, they've switched things because they were discovering in Utah, or this comes out of that, they hadn't been able to keep up with updating things. So now it's gone to a, a, a higher fee. We're paying three to five thousand dollars a year to have access to it. So our funding for that primarily comes through the state or Mental Health America. So those are our partners. They're both Mental Health America, Wisconsin, and PPI, offers thousand dollar grants. And so that's primarily our funding. We've reached out, I've reached out to some folks um, that I know just for support for smaller things like, you know, they're buying, so one of the things they're going to do this, for this holiday season for all the students. So generosity is the theme. And generosity, we talked about in our lab, it isn't just about like buying something. But generosity shows up in, you know, saying, taking time to say hello to someone or just how are you doing or all the different small ways that we can be generous with our time, right, to help someone else or notice them or whatever. So one of the things we talked about, and they decided to do, um, is they, they wanted to give messages of hope to students which supports mental health. So they came up with a list of different sayings. I'm going to print them all out. And when I leave here tonight, um, I'm going home to get bring back tomorrow's five gigantic buckets of candy cans, looking at candy cans. And there we go. We're going to cut some tape and they're going to deliver those next week to all the kids through advisories. Um, and it's a plan to acknowledge staff and uh, teachers in the building as well as part of that. So I think finding creative ways to do those things keeps, keeps, keeps it going, keeps it forward. And so looking forward about, we've started those conversations about how do we bring it out to the community? And it might be just part three, you know, with some of the eighth graders.
Yeah.
I suspect the eighth graders are coming in. They can come and help be part of that. So as we're expanding into other schools.
Or is it that we inform parents about it? Is it just a newsletter or is there things that we do?
So at the beginning, with the students who are not going to be part of Hope Squad, their parents are contacted. I contact their parents and say, your child's been nominated. They would like to be part of it. How do you feel about that? Here's what it's all about. Parents get updates from me. In general, we have, we took things out in newsletters. Leanne, it matches great about putting things out in newsletters or we'll send you some about what Hope Squad is doing then.
David has helped to highlight some things too. Yeah.
Great pictures and videos that go out. So, and then Leanne will take all of that, send it out.
Right now, we're also working to get um, our tabling at conferences so that parents who come into the building to check in on their kids, that is first.
And then they talked about wanting to table an eighth grade transition, right, and other, other things that are happening in the building where folks are coming.
Sports events are good too.
I know you guys talked a lot about breaking the stigma, but I think a big piece of this too is just letting other students know that they aren't alone. And so the fact that there's voices out there speaking up and sharing your own personal stories, I think is really huge, especially for this age um, and, and this audience. So thank you guys for doing this work.
Very powerful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
You do not have to stay. Thanks, Jane. And in our superintendent's report, there are no discussion items, action items. Administration recommends approval of proposed two thousand five, two thousand twenty-six academic calendar option is attached.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the calendar twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Are there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
I'll stay on all.
Motion carries. Consideration of overnight field trip requested from Caitlin Knoll, S H S, S H S, to attend Superior Days in Madison, Wisconsin.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion is second to co, to approve the overnight field trip to Superior Days. Is there any further discussion?
We did, um, another one of the items added to the Superior Days was um, Medicaid reimbursement. So that was another big one.
Which expands our funding, community, health resources.
Exactly. So it all ties in. So it's a good one that they're bringing to Superior Days.
And it's two items that they're really going to focus on.
Those two, and then they had that third one. I think it was like half percent of tax.
Tax, yeah.
But yeah, two, have to pertain to us a lot, so.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Administration recommends the American Indian Education Parent Advisory Committee request to add drumming to the graduation ceremony starting in twenty twenty-five.
Motion to, second.
Motion in a second to approve the drumming at the graduation ceremony starting in twenty twenty-five. Are there any further discussion?
Um, I wanted to take a sec. Also, we aren't really allowed to respond while there's public comment, but thank you for sharing. And I'm really sorry that those things have happened to you, but thank you for being a voice and representing too. Thank you.
I think one of the things we talked about last time too is, is, is the amount of time, but then the, the, the song in and of itself. And then the words, what, what the expression will be. I think we asked that we have an opportunity to, to view that as well.
And articulate that within the program.
Correct.
Well, one thing I'd add, you know, it's, as board approving something, whether we should or shouldn't, um, you know, just like, just like the field trip, we know what's going to happen. So we can prove, see the whole thing of it. You know, the board's being asked to approve something. We don't know the details. We don't know, I guess, I, I don't want to some offend anything or, but I don't know the song. I don't know, I don't know what's being presented. Um, I don't know if it's for the beginning of the graduation or the entirety of the graduation. I heard some people say, as kids are walking across the stage, someone else says just at the beginning. So we're kind of being asked to approve something that we don't have all the details on. So I, I would like to see the details. Um, but also, also say too, um, well, I, I do believe that there is somewhat of a religious aspect to it, and the board needs to be careful of uh, promoting one religion over another. Um, I do think that there is also an aspect of, um, different cultures, you know, people being heard um, within our, within our school district and doesn't necessarily have to carry a religious tone to it. Um, but, you know, first of all, to also, you know, I, nobody should have to go through anything that you've gone through. Um, you know, through your time here in Superior or, or any school for that matter. And, you know, the board can say here, make policy and guidelines and discipline, you know, all we want, but we can't control the voices of every individual mouth, you know, but we can try to do stuff that, um, and maybe try to change that behavior in the future. And, you know, into, integrating, you know, someone's culture into some of the stuff that we do, I, I do think is uh, valid and a good, good thing to do. And I'll, I'll say, for you specifically also, had you not spoken, had you not got up there and, and gave your uh, three minutes for what it's worth, I don't know how I would vote tonight on this topic, but hearing you speak specifically, um, that's my vote in a, in a different, different way of where I guess I was, I was thinking I was going to go. So my vote is because of you, not of anything else, not of any of the uh, research I've done or my personal feelings or anything like that. It's, you know, I, again, I, I would commend you on getting up and speaking and hearing from you, hearing your experience, hearing why you as a student, you know, not the adults around us, but you as a student that's in our school, why it benefits you, I think that speaks volumes, at least for me. So thank you for that. Um, so I, I guess I'll leave it at that.
I, I, I hear your concern. Um, the religious factor of it, I mean, students, students themselves can on their own at a graduation um, do their own prayer on the side or get a group of people on the side. The establishment clause itself is very careful in describing what can and can't be done, especially with religious um, factors at a graduation. There was a time in this school district when we had invocations. And uh, it was quite clear even back then that uh, that should not have been going on, but that was the practice. The, the, the part you mentioned to the wanting to know what the song is about, the words and stuff, I'm sure we'll get that. It's very similar to me to all graduations where the graduation ceremony is set by the principal and the staff at the high school. Um, the, the speakers, um, they're chosen and then they pick what they're going to speak on and everything. So there, there's a procedure in place year after year after year of what our graduation ceremony looks like. And, and I'm confident that uh, Mr. Fezzi at the high school and, and if, if Amy needs to get involved in it, but it, it'll be very structured. I know we talked about, is it going to be at the end? Also, you did mention the last time it, it might be when you're walking across the stage. What I, what I've known, what I've witnessed, and what I've found out in five schools that I've checked on now, they do a very short presentation at the very beginning.
I think that's what we were planning initially. Jones values.
It's my, it's on it.
Yeah. And I think it was said before that this isn't necessarily something that the board does have to approve. Um, but here we are doing that. Uh, but we don't, like you said, we don't approve the songs that are sung by the choir. We don't sit there and, you know, go through the speeches that are given. And so I think in that regard, we do give our trust in those who are organizing it. Um, and, and I'll reiterate what I said last week. I think it would be an educational moment for um, the people in attendance to express what the drumming is about and what the meaning is behind it. And perhaps the words or whatever goes along with it. So use it as an educational piece for everyone there.
And I think also said that tonight.
Yep.
He said it's about all students.
Yeah.
This committee has been very vocal since the beginning of the year in a positive way to get into all the schools, the elementary, the middle school, the high school, to include parents, to get new voices involved, which is wonderful. And now they're, they're pushing to put, get out into the community, which is, which is great. And you should really be proud of yourselves.
Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Our board committee reports first, the teaching and learning action item, new course. Administration recommends the addition of courses at Superior High School. The first one, do we need to take each one separately? Can we take them all together?
Crystal has opinions.
And we're going to take them all together.
Yeah. Altogether, one.
Okay.
And unless you've had a concern about one, then you could.
Let off.
Then I'll read all three. Enter to music theory. New course, twenty twenty-five. Half-credit elective. Personal finance literacy, new course, twenty twenty-seven. This is going to be a state graduation requirement for a half-credit. Athletic development and performance in the physical education department will count towards required P E credits.
Motion to approve.
Motion, second to approve the additional courses for Superior High School, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Administration recommends the approval of the district A C P website and A C P slash E for E plan.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the A C P website and the A C P E for E plan. Are there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. There were no discussion items, informational items at the committee of the whole on December second, twenty twenty-four. Updates were provided by Jen Willoughby, Director of Early Child and Family Engagement, and the Indian Education update, which was very thorough. Kate Tesh also presented. She's Director of Continuous Improvement and Assessment. She provided us an update on the twenty-three, twenty-four student achievement data and our D P I report cards of all of our schools in the district.
Motion to accept the teaching and learning committee report.
Aye.
Motion in a second to accept the teaching and learning committee report. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Personnel negotiations committee administration recommends approval of December twenty twenty-four new hires and separations.
Motion approved, second.
Motion is second to approve the new hires and separations from December two, twenty twenty-four. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. No discussion items, no informational items.
Motion accept. Personal negotiations committee report.
Motion is second to accept personnel negotiations committee report. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. The budget and insurance committee, the action item, gifts, grants, and bequests. The administration recommends approval to accept the gifts, grants, and bequests received in November of twenty twenty-four.
Motion approve.
Second.
Motion in a second to accept the gifts, grants, and bequests. Are there any further discussion? It's another impressive list in the school district. Certainly thanks to all of you. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. There were no discussion items, informational items, fund ten revenue and expenditure preliminary reports were provided.
Motion to accept the budget insurance committee report.
Second.
Motion is second to accept the budget insurance committee report. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Operations committee, action items, none, discussion items, none, informational items. At the committee of the whole, Bobby Matherley, Director of Buildings and Grounds, provided us with the safety update of our buildings in the school district.
Motion to accept the operations committee report.
Yeah. Motion is second to accept the operations committee report. Are there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Policies and rules committee, action item, second reading of policy eighty-five forty, vending machines.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the policy eighty-five forty vending machines. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. Second reading of policy eighty-five thirty-one, free and reduced price meals.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion is second to approve policy eighty-five thirty-one, free and reduced price meals. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. There were no discussion items. There were no Motion carries. There were no discussion items. There were no informational items.
Motion to accept the Policies and Rules Committee report.
Aye.
Motion is second to accept the Policies and Rules Committee report. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Other reports by members of the board. I have two. First of all, on behalf, and I haven't told you yet, on behalf of our school board, I'd like to publicly say to our community, thank you very much for supporting the referendum back on November fifth. The school district works inordinately, very hard at making sure that we stay within our budget. And the community recognizes that the, the state does not support us in the way that, that we should be supported. And, uh, by passing that referendum, doesn't clear off everything, but it sure puts us at a little bit better footing and stuff. And, and we understand that we still have a difficult task ahead of us in the coming years. So, but thank you very much on behalf of our school board. Uh, secondly, next Monday, December sixteenth, from five-thirty to six-thirty, right here in this, uh, meeting room, any interested people in our superior community of serving on the school board, Amy and I will be here to, for an hour to speak with you, to provide you with some information about the possibility of you, a person being a school board candidate, what it, what it takes and what it means to be one. So you're invited to that if you're interested.
David, you put out media thank you things, right? I thought I saw like on our social media, thank you to the community for passing the referendum.
Yeah. Yeah.
Be, be metro.
I couldn't remember. Yeah.
We see it on our Facebook and.
Had it. We had communication plans right after.
Right.
We're depending on. Yeah.
It costs money to put in the newspaper. So that's a bummer. It's very expensive.
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever ways we could do that.
And listening sessions have started with different departments. So some board members are attending, but, uh, Molly, I think will be combining everything and so all the board members will get that feedback from those.
Are you talking about the listening sessions?
Yeah.
As we are, every session, we're compiling it. So it's been in your weekly update. As we finish, you can have access to.
Just click on the one and the, each one of the.
And Bryant is tomorrow morning.
Seven forty-five, Brian. Are there any other reports? District Program Highlights, Amy, anything else?
Busy month, um, a lot of holiday, uh, programs. We had scholarship night, uh, last week. So. Yeah.
Moving forward.
Moving forward. Busy time of year.
Last thing, consideration of bills and pre-approved bills.
Motion to pay the bills. Aye.
Motion is second to pay our bills. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Aye.
Motion is second to adjourn. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
The holidays.
But very enjoy the holiday season.